All right. Here. 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 Everybody, please rise for the pledge. And Bridgette, would you lead us?
I'd lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, welcome to April. If everybody, please take a look at your minutes from 3/1919. If there's no corrections, errors, comments, we'll entertain a motion. Krasinski, make a motion to approve the minutes of March 19, 2019.
Next, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye. Item number four is a resolution to our retiring police detective, Ann Galambowski.
Galambowski.
Galambowski. And I'm a Polack, I should be able to say that. I totally messed up.
One of our fellow countrymen.
Yes. Kathryn, when you are ready, please.
Resolution number 12049-040101, resolution of appreciation to Ann E. Galambowski. Whereas Ann Galambowski began her employment with the City of Oak Creek on February 27, 1989 as a full-time police officer, and whereas during her 30 years and one month of service, Ann has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer early in her career, then rising to the rank of detective, and whereas Ann has led the way by being the first female police officer hired by the department, and whereas Ann continued to lead the way by becoming the first female promotion by the department, being promoted to the rank of detective, and whereas Ann has been a valuable employee during her years of dedicated service with the City of Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been well-known for her work ethic and her dedication to the department, and whereas Ann received two letters of commendation from the Oak Creek Police Department for her assistance in two separate officer-involved shooting investigations, one in 1989 and one in 1995, and whereas Ann received nine acknowledgements, three notorious arrest awards, two awards of excellence, and six fitness awards in recognition of her efforts and hard work as an officer and detective for the Oak Creek Police Department, whereas Ann served as an evidence technician for several years, and through her efforts assisted with numerous investigations being closed. Ann Galambowski was one of the founding members of the department's crime prevention unit and helped establish that successful program of partnering the department with the community. Ann Galambowski has been the primary point of contact for the department's sex offender registry, as well as probation and parole during her time as detective, and whereas Ann Galambowski is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 30 years and one month of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the City of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, this sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Ann Galambowski for her years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Ann Galambowski and her family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a single copy thereof to Ann Galambowski, passed and adopted this first day of April, 2019.
Thank you, Kathryn. Chief Anderson, would you like to say a few words?
Chief Steve Anderson from the police department. I worked with Ann going back from when I started 28 years ago. She's been a key part of our department. She's going to be sorely missed. You do not replace 30 years of experience in law enforcement at the snap of a finger. Today was her last actual workday, so it was a good day for everybody. It was a good day to send Ann off, and on Thursday, we will have an official retirement ceremony for her, so we just wish her the best, and she'll be missed by the rest of the department. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Would anybody else like to say a few words on Ann's behalf? Mike?
I'd just like to pass along my good wishes and health in her retirement. Our family has known Ann for many years, and the chief, I'm sure he, 28 you've got, and she's got 30? Okay, well, I don't know, then you don't remember when she came over from Milwaukee, but we got her as a transfer out of Milwaukee, and Oak Creek was lucky to get her. Thank you, Ann.
Anyone else?
No. I too, I'd like to wish Ann a long, happy retirement, thank her for all her service to the City of Oak Creek, particularly whether she realizes it or not, she was quite a role model and trailblazer here in the City of Oak Creek, being the first female officer, and we now have quite a few female officers here, so she really had to pave the road for that. Really nice to say it happened here in Oak Creek, almost 30 years back, so kudos to her, and again, thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Motion, please.
I'll move to approve resolution number 12049-04011, a resolution of appreciation to Ann E. Galambowski, retiring police detective.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. Item five is a public hearing for consideration of a financial institution with a drive-through on a portion of the property at 7869 South 13th. Kathryn?
Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Greg Polachek Summit Credit Union for a conditional use permit for a financial institution with drive-through facility on a portion of the property at 7869 South 13th Street. Applicant is Greg Polachek Summit Credit Union, property owner Highgate LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is February 27, 2019.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doug Seymour, the Director of Community Development for the city, and this is a public hearing on a request by Summit Credit Union for a drive-through financial institution on a portion of the property at 7869 South 13th Street. The property is zoned before highway business, and as such, any drive-through uses require a conditional use permit within this district. As proposed, the site would include a roughly 3,700 square foot, single-story building with two drive-through lanes, also one drive-through ATM lane. Access to the site would be off a shared drive from 13th Street and an internal access road, so there would be no direct access to either 13th Street or Drexel Avenue, and the minimum parking requirements are met based on the square footage. Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed conditional use. They have recommended their approval, and they have recommended approval of the conditions and restrictions that accompany that conditional use request. We do have some elevations that are attached as part of your packet, just show those to you. Here's a conceptual plan for that. Notice that the drive-through lanes are screened from Drexel Avenue by way of the building, and if you have seen Summit Credit Union facilities, some of the newer ones throughout the area, you know that they're very architecturally significant, really good-looking buildings, and I think probably a really good fit for this new development on 13th and Drexel. With that in mind, this is a public hearing. I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for a financial institution with a drive-through lanes, to please fill out an appearance form. Once your name is called, please proceed to the podium to address your questions and or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, we'll make three calls. This will be the first. Second call. Our third and final call. Please, name and address, please.
I'm with Summit Credit Union, and I'm just here to say that we support, obviously, we support this initiative. If anybody had any questions, we're here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. We'll open it up to the council in seven, so, six. Anyone else on third and final? We'll now close the public hearing and move to consideration of that ordinance for the conditional use permit, item six. Open it up to the council. Questions, comments? Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, First District. What I'm about to say, I've discussed it with the city administrator, and I will admit that initially, I was not in favor of this and the development to the east of this credit union. It's, you know, Summit Credit Union came before us before the other development did, and that's where part of the heartache I have is. But after talking with the city administrator about this in length, I mean, I understand the goodness that this will bring to the area, even though residents and constituents of mine have said, "For goodness' sake, another bank, another credit union." Well, there are reasons why they come here, and there's reasons why they build, so they know better than me whether or not they can sustain your business, so I won't say anymore about that. But my angst about this and the other development, it goes back a little further, and I want to get this on the record, and I promise not to repeat the same thing when the other development comes, I'll just probably just refer to tonight. But I know we had a developer who had some property they needed to do something with, and it wasn't zoned, and this is my perception of the way it went down, and I understand perception is not always reality, but this is the way that I perceived it to happen. We have a developer who wanted to do something with some property, and he realized, they realized that they can't do it as zoned, so let's rezone it to what we can rezone it to, so we can develop it. It goes through all the processes, there's no problems, it passes, boom, it's rezoned. Now the developer says, "Well, I think I got some, I got some potential people to build here, so now we got to create some certified survey maps, we got to create some lots, so let's go through the process and have that done," and it's done, all above board. I mean, there's no, nothing hidden about it, no hidden agendas, at least from my end here, from anybody else's, but we get the two lots, we get certified survey maps, and boom, we got two lots. Then, out of the blue, on the newspaper, I find out about what's being built there, and it raises a little bit of irritation for me, because I'm answering phone calls and emails, saying, "Why are we developing that property, you know, why are we letting them build that other development?" I won't mention it, but, "And now we're going to have another bank." And I sit there and I go, "Not much I can do about it. I can't vote no, because it's properly zoned and everything is there, so unless I find some sort of safety reason, you know, I can't vote no." And I was prepared to not even move forth with a motion. I mean, normally, the aldermen for the district would make the motion, and I was just going to sit here and be quiet, and then abstain from voting yes, because I was that frustrated with the way this went down. I will say that since sharing my frustration with the city administrator, the development, potential development to the north, they have come to us, we did have some information, and I'm not saying that myself or anybody, any other alderman needs to be involved in every bit of development, but sometimes, we just kind of like a heads-up, and I don't think we got a heads-up, or I didn't, with this particular two developments. So, I may sound like I'm contradicting myself. I'm going to, I'm going to support this because, based on what the city administrator shared with me with regards to what this can do for the area. Be honest with you, I'm not so excited about the other one, but this one, I'll, I will support it based on what the administrator said, but those, that's my feelings, I said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk about the actual conditional use for the drive-through?
Just coming.
Go ahead.
Very attractive looking building. Stunning architecture, I wouldn't say stunning, but interesting architecture, and essentially is a gateway to our Drexel Avenue economic footprint here, so we appreciate your efforts and investment in the community.
We did bring that up at the Plan Commission meeting, in addition to, I think, the only other real concerns we have are, you know, not only with this, but just the whole areas, how things are traveling, you know, traffic getting in and out of this whole corner.
Just to add a little bit to planning, in particular to this site itself that's on the agenda, do agree with Alderman Gale, very attractive-looking, modern-looking building, sitting in a high-profile spot. Concerning the drive-through, though, when we do deal with drive-throughs of different capacities, whether restaurant or financial institutions, sometimes we struggle with it. The fire department had good clearances through here. This was actually one of the better-designed ones we've seen, and it was a very easy decision at planning. From a planning perspective, it worked out really well, good use of land, so we did like to lay out as well as the fire department for access, so. If there's any other comments, if not, motion.
Krasinski?
You want to go, Steve?
Yeah, yeah. I missed what the mayor said, I'm sorry. Krasinski, make a motion to approve ordinance number 2932, approving a conditional use permit for a financial institution with a drive-through facility on a portion of the property at 7869 South 13th Street.
Lorick, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item number seven, there is a slight typo in it, the date should read 3/1919, and it's consideration of a resolution for a final plat on the subdivision at Glen Crossing Edition Number Two, also known as Phase. Doug?
Thank you. This is, again, the final plat for Glen Crossing Edition Number Two, Phase Two, addresses 8459 South Rosewood Lane. This essentially is the last, final step in the subdivision development process. The improvements have been put in, there's still some outstanding, or potentially outstanding issues, some cleanup issues with weenerities, but staff, engineering staff is comfortable with the process, that will be done prior to the issuance of any building permits for that. So, with that in mind, the Plan Commission has recommended approval of the final plat for Glen Crossing Edition Number Two of the property at 8459 South Rosewood Lane.
Thank you, Doug. Questions, comments? Greg?
Alderman, Lorick, Second District. I just have a question, is the applicant here?
My name is Robert Fox, and I reside at my office in Waukesha, Wisconsin. I'm a surveyor of record on the project, so questions I can serve.
Well, first off, I'm definitely in support of this. I hear from many constituents that they would really love to see single-family homes start going up. I do have to voice one concern that a constituent raised. He phoned me about this item, and just was curious. In the initial meeting for the first plat, he questioned whether or not the homes would be so large that he wouldn't be able to see the tree line behind, and something to the, something to the effect of, most people nowadays are looking for larger ranches, so most of them will be single families, and he called me and said that the first two or three homes are actually multiple stories. Do you happen to know, going forward, if they all will be that way?
I believe you're speaking to a resident who lives on 13th Street. His house is for sale, he is trying to sell it, so I don't know if that's a real issue that we should concern ourselves with, but as a developer of the project, we're selling lots to both builders and to individual residents, so if they come in and want a two-story home, that falls under the jurisdiction of the city building code as to, you know, are you going to let them build a two-story home? If they want a two-story home, I think that's a decision by the city, not by the developer. We have no restrictions, our deed restrictions address minimum sizes for both single-family two-story and multi-story type structures, but they exceed the limit, or the minimum standards that the city would have. However, they're not overly large, because we're looking for quality homes to continue the development theme that has been started there with nice quality homes. So, from an architectural review standpoint, that's what we're looking for, is to have quality homes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we did talk about that, we did have that resident in here, he did voice that concern, and I think he summed it up best. We do not have those restrictions, and we could not guarantee that one way or the other, so you could see a variety of homes in there. Motion, please.
Lorick will move that the council adopt resolution number 12045-0319, a resolution approving a final subdivision plat for Glen Crossing Edition Number Two, AKA Phase Two.
Next, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item number eight is a presentation of the 2019 Annual Assessment Reevaluation Process. Marty, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, give you an update where we're at. This year, we've just completed the revaluation, which our contract lays out that we do revaluations every year, and we've been doing revaluations since 2014. So on an annual basis, we're performing what's called an interim market update, where we're taking the data that we have in the system, analyzing the new sales, modifying the records that have had new construction or demolition activity, and after analyzing those sales and testing a process to recreate the values, when we feel comfortable that it's doing a reasonable job of predicting those values, then we apply it to everybody within the community. So by using the annual sales from like the past year or 15 months, every year, whatever change in the marketplace that the community's experiencing, is being passed on to the property owners. Back before then, we used to do revaluations, maybe every three years, every five years, so what would happen is, is that as your market changes from one year to the next, overall, we weren't changing the assessments on the properties that didn't have any changes in characteristics. So after two, three, four, or five years, you would have a situation where we may send a notice out where all of a sudden, your value goes up by 20%. And what happens is, if there's certain areas within the community that it's more dynamic or not as dynamic, if you're doing it once every five years, you're not rolling with the flow, you're not recognizing the areas that the values are going up faster than other properties, and the properties, if they're not going up at that same rate, are at a while, would actually be, they would end up experiencing a bias where their assessments are more than what they should be, because they're not going up at the same rate as other folks. So this helps us to equalize it, so that everybody in the community has an equal, fair taxes that they need to pay. We look at sales for the past 15 months, Mark shared with me that this year, the pool of sales that we ended up having was 409 sales, we're using that to establish the values of all the residential property owners. There is, the notice has been dated today, and should be in people's mailboxes here in the next few days. We're required by Wisconsin statutes to send a notice when we change the assessment from one year to the next. So the notice that the property owners will receive will have a line on it that shows last year's assessment, and what we're proposing this year's assessment to be, and it'll show, it'll calculate what a difference is. If you had no changes in your property, again, it's going to be those new sales that are dictating what the value should be this year based on those recent transactions. If you've had new construction activity, if you've put an addition on, built a new home, or building's down, then that probably would change a little bit more, because those characteristics have changed. When, and also with that notice that we're sending out, we've done it on an annual basis, there's certain questions that maybe people have in the back of their mind. We're including this frequently asked question brochure, I think it was in your packet, a copy of the notice tonight, and that, questions and answers. That, sometimes, somebody has a gnawing question, that helps to answer those. If they have any questions, the assessor's office, we have two levels of appeal, or at least, we can speak to the folks. The first one, the first level of appeal, is what we call the open book or informal review. We'll end up recommending that property owners give a call to our office, schedule an appointment with us, so that way it works well for everybody involved. Instead of coming down here and waiting for an hour, for days, trying to talk to somebody you know on a Tuesday at 4:00, you come down and speak to somebody, we'll have a folder prepared with your information, so that we can, right there, talk to you, show you what we have on file, so that you can verify that our information's correct, and at this informal level, if you have information that you feel we did not consider, feel free to share it with us. We'll take it under advisement, and if it shows that our assessment needs to be modified, we can do it at this level. It's the best, the best route to go. It's informal, no rules of evidence, don't have to have an appraiser on board, you come on down and just speak as a property owner, and clarify the value. We're going to be, end up speaking to folks, the notice says to give us a call within two to three weeks after you receive the notice, because we need to conclude this phase of the project by like the 1st of May, because there needs to be a span of at least 30 days from the time that we change notices, until the final formal level of appeal to board review meets. So there has to be a time span, and that's why we'll get it done in the month of April. We've got multiple members of staff, I'm available, Mark's available, other members of our staff, so if they have any questions, please ask your constituents to please phone us, we'll be more than happy to try to work with them in setting up that appointment. Again, if they disagree with whatever that assessment that we've generated, or they've gone through the open book process, they do have one final level of appeal that the Wisconsin statutes affords them, and that's the board review. And that's a panel of citizens in the City of Oak Creek that with the statutes in place and training provided by the Department of Revenue, they operate similar to a court, in that they listen to information from the property owners and from the assessor, and then make a determination from there. That's, that's something that is available, these levels of appeal are available every year, and if they have any questions, to give us a call, we recommend that. In addition, if they wanted to do some research, I spoke to Barb today, we've created a couple of spreadsheets with some links that are going to be on the assessor's webpage, that show what the values are. One of them is sorted by parcel ID, and the other one is sorted by address. You go to your street, take a look at the values of the people on the street, so if you had some questions, like, "I know I need to be just like the guy across the street." We've always been the same, you could see if we still maintain that same type of thing. From the standpoint of the changes, overall, looking at the residential's and commercial's, they were between 4.5 and 5% of value from the standpoint of economics. So the sales that we considered, your previous to the sales that we considered this year, is about 4.5 to 5%. So probably, a lot of folks will see changes that are there, but each property is individually, the assessment's calculated individually on its characteristics and comparable sales. So if, for example, you have a ranch house, and you're, somebody across the street has a two-story house, it could be looking at different sales. It could be the same, but it could change differently, because again, those comparables are steering us in whatever that direction is. So, you know, if anything else, if you have any questions, like we've always said, we're available to speak to folks, give us a call. The most efficient way to do it is give us that call, so we can set that appointment up, better than spending a day down here, waiting to talk to somebody, "I think it gets to me today." This way, you plan, it's like, hey, I got to go to the dentist today, as pleasant as that is, now I get to go see the assessor. So, you could, you could work that out. The other thing I say, I would recommend, since we are mailing them in there, and we don't know about the post office, anybody that's watching this online, if they haven't received their notice from us by early next week, maybe give us a call to find out, is there a situation, why they didn't receive their notice, because everybody should have it, I would think, by then, with the, with the addresses that we have. So if they, you get a call, say, "Hey, they, they didn't send me my notice," please tell them to give us a call, or if anybody's watching online, if you don't receive your notice by next week, give us a call, we'll, we'll track it down and see, we can get you a copy. We'll try to work with you any way that we possibly can. But we've concluded it for this year, we're starting the next phases. We thank you for bringing us on board, we've been here for quite a while, I've been here for quite a while. Think we got a pretty good finger, a good pulse on the, on the community, I think the values are reasonable, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Marty. Any questions for Marty? Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, First District. Marty and Mark, thank you for being here tonight. I may have been the part of the reason that you're here, because I got most of the calls on the property values when the tax bills went out.
Yes.
Thank you, Barb. And I know that that was past the time when all the, the assess, the notices went out for the assessment, so I was telling the constituents to contact your office, because I thought it was past any deadline as to what they could do. So, I appreciate, we're going to get preliminary, kind of like, would you say, preliminary notices now, what your, what our anticipated value's going to be, and then we have an opportunity to talk to you, and then later in the year, we have the final one, that, the way I heard you come. And then we have an opportunity to talk to you. And then later in the year, we have the final one. Is that the way I heard you correctly?
Well, the cycle in the state is, is that you set the assessment on January 1st of every year. And then you can envision in the middle of the year, the chance to update the values and listen to any appeals of the value. So when you're done with that final level of appeal after the board review, then your assessments are really going to be considered very stable. So that once all the folks that collect property taxes, city, the schools, county, M A T C, M M S D, once they establish their budgets to provide the services, calculate their forms of revenue, they're going to define what their levy is, how much we need to collect from folks. So then come November, you will have a stable, you know, you have a levy that's divided by a stable assessment. So it's somewhat the cart before the horse. You change the value in the middle of the year, but your tax rate gets developed in December because of that. But it helps to give you a stable number coming in instead of not being stable.
So the folks that, the folks that had concerns around December when they got their tax bill about the values of their houses, did they have any recourse when they called, they contacted you at that late date in the game? Or did they just like, sorry, your time is up and you have to wait until next year? I'm just curious.
Well, the Wisconsin statutes define that if a palpable error exists, and they've defined six examples of what a palpable error is, we could try to do some sort of correction. What you're looking at there is going to be exemptions that aren't granted, property that's not within the community, a double assessment that's made, a calculation in the tax that's an error, or some sort of clerical error on ours. One plus one doesn't equal 14. Those are the palpable errors that the statute defines. If it's just a question of whether the value is too high or not, unfortunately, they may not have no recourse at that point in time.
I thought that was the case. And we've had those issues with the, with some of the, you know, the taxes and the values and stuff like that. So, okay. So again, thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
Pleasure, pleasure to speak with you all. It's always fun seeing you guys.
Anybody else have anything for Marty? Ken?
Thanks, Mayor. Marty, this is, this whole process is one of the few things that generates some angst when these notices first go out. How, you know, we've done, I think you said we've done an annual revale since 2014. I know my earlier tenure here on the council was once, we were doing them every three years, I think.
Three to five years.
Other communities are doing the same thing. What is our, how does our comp look out there in the community, in other communities in terms of how often they're doing this?
Mark is our regional manager. I'll let him answer the question on that.
Yes. Currently, we have four communities that are doing annual revaluations.
Four in the metro area here?
City of Franklin and two in the Lake District in Waukesha County.
Everyone else is doing some multi-year format then?
In Milwaukee County, we've got one that does it every two years. One that is every three to four years.
So it feels often in terms of markets where you have rapidly changing real estate values, this is doing it every year is, I guess, considered generically the most fair to everyone?
It's both the most fair and it's also the most economic. If you go out three years, even if you go out two years, and the percentage of increase doubles, so as opposed to a 5% increase this year, if you waited a year and that increases 10%, your, both your informal appeals and your formal appeals double. And there's also additional research required to get the values up to that full 10% increase or so forth. So the longer you go out, there's more fee that would, that we would have to charge in order to do the revale because the appeals literally do double. If you go out two years, if you go out three years, they could triple.
It's easier for you for them to actually do it annual review?
It's easier for the property owners because the increases and decreases in value in taxes are more fluid as opposed to a spike every three to five years. If a property owner gets a 30% increase in value after a four-year wait, and the average increase is, say, 20%, they're going to get a full 10% increase in their tax bill in that off-year. So both from the fee standpoint that the city pays and the equity and fluidity of the values and tax bills, it's much better for all property owners, we feel.
Residents and neighborhoods typically go up and argue with them.
Well, and just, just one other key point. It has nothing to do with the taxes themselves as far as the old misnomer of a higher increase in value means the city's going after more tax dollars. It, that's not the case at all for those that are listening. It's really all about the uniformity and keeping current with the current market values. That's what the statutes actually indicate. That we're supposed to do.
With the levy freeze, it is reshuffling of the decks.
Right.
Clearly, I'm folks just, folks that typically get, you know, valuation increases are ones that are neighbors are going to increase regularly.
Yeah, and just one final thing on that. Property owners, the tax bills are available online. So if you were to go back in time from 2014, if your increase in assessed value was plus or minus one or 2% of the average increase, those property owners saw no real impact in their tax bill from year to year.
Oh, based upon your average versus your neighbor's.
That's correct.
Andrew?
Just one thing, if I could, Mayor, thanks. Could you describe any, I don't know the answer to this question, so I wanted to just throw it out there. Are there, are there real negative consequences for the property owner or maybe the municipality that you've seen in a multi-year, like such as your communities that do three and five-year, where they're not, you know, maybe as blessed as the city of Oak Creek is at this time, where you see a declining property tax or a declining valuation? Say, you know, you go the other way. You're using examples of increasing 10, 15% over a three-year period. And if you wait, you might see a 15% increase in that three-year period. Are there any negative consequences on the flip side of that coin to the residents to wait three years and get a huge, you know, decrease in valuation? I mean, clearly, when you do a refinance, you're going out and doing an appraisal and, you know, doing all that. But any, any situations like that where it's actually a negative for the, for the property owners themselves or the, or the communities?
To wait three to four years, the negative?
In a declining situation?
In a declining situation. In the past declining situation, the single-family residential properties were falling in value, but condominiums were falling at twice that rate. So if we had waited in the declining market, as Marty mentioned earlier, without doing the revaluation, the condominium market was paying more than their fair share because their market value was actually declining greater than the single-family homes. Likewise, single-family residential lots or vacant land in general, there was a very minimal market for that during that declining market period that we had for that five-year window. So there is a benefit both ways in an increasing or declining market.
All right. Anyone else? Questions, comments? No. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. And again, I think it's very helpful. You put the flyer in with the frequently asked questions. And if you can, on the website, pertaining to Ken's question about the revale year to year, I think that explanation would help the residents. That's one feedback I get is, why do we do it year to year? So you provided a very nice explanation, so I think it'd be worthwhile on the website.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure speaking to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item nine, another informational. It is our treasurer's report, and we have Barb with us.
Is it on now? There we go. So this is the treasurer report on investment and banking for the month of February, ending February 28th. Beginning balance was $60,916,124.16. Ending balance, $48,465,690.76. Interest earned, $112,218.3. Overall decrease from beginning to end, $12,450,433.40. February tax collection was $326,582.40. We did have a tax settlement from January collection that was due on February 20th to the other taxing jurisdictions of about 13.5 million, which would be why that balance decreased.
Any questions for Barb? Barb, on the payment to the other jurisdictions, is that quarterly? Is it monthly?
It's statutorily certain times of the year. It usually follows, well, it follows year-end. That's the first one in January. And then after each installment, that following 15th of the month, except in the case of February, it's always the 20th.
Thank you.
Yep.
Item 10, consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed from the city of Oak Creek to Walden O.C. Doug?
Melissa?
Put your thunder away.
No, that's okay. It was well written in the staff report, very concise. Back in 2016, Walden LLC conveyed this parcel at essentially the northeast corner of Drexel and IKEA Way to the city for the construction of IKEA Way and to provide for compensating storage for that floodplain. So this deed, at this point, this quitclaim deed now maintains that area that we have for the right of way and the compensating storage, but it returns that portion of the parcel that is not needed for those purposes back to Walden for development purposes.
Questions for Doug, Melissa, anybody? All right, motion.
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 12053-040119. A resolution approving and authorizing execution of a quitclaim deed from the city of Oak Creek to Walden O.C. LLC.
Next second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 11 is Department of Public Works and his consideration purchase and approve a new Toro Groundmaster mower. Ted?
Thanks. Pretty straightforward. This is, excuse me, one of the C E P purchases for 2019. We looked at this through the N I P, this Wisconsin State Contract and the Sourcewell Contract for pricing and got our best price through the N I P A contract. So we're going to, looking for permission to purchase that through Rynder's. The one thing I did fail to mention on the report was the old unit we will be putting off to auction through the municipal auction when the rest of our equipment goes up.
Questions for Ted? Seeing none. Motion.
They'll move to approve the purchase of the 2019 Toro Groundmaster 7200 mower from Rynder's Inc. in the amount of $21,244.40.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration to approve the replacement of two overhead garage doors from Doormaster Garage Company for a total cost of $40,580. And Chief Anderson's here.
Yes, Steve Anderson from the Police Department. This was an item, again, approved through last year's budget through the C I P C E P process. The doors are coming up to their 16th year with the building right now. Getting numerous expensive repairs on them. And also parts that they were having a hard time finding replacements where they're just not making them anymore. We could piece them together, but they're going to break again. So basically, the council agreed last year with the budget to approve these doors. The new bid actually came in $2,100 less than the C I P C E P request. And the vendor believes it's just because we're doing them both at once. It's the shipping costs, everything else that's involved in it. So we're just asking for the release of the fund so we can schedule the doors to be replaced.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for the chief regarding the doors?
One quick question.
Yep, go ahead, Chris.
Alderman Guzekowski, sixth district. Chief, to, for the installation, is that something that's part of the process for the billing of it and the purchase or are?
This includes removing the old doors, putting the new doors up, everything that entails, this is everything that's a part of it, yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Motion.
They'll move to approve the previously approved C I P C E P for the replacement of two overhead garage doors from Doormaster Garage Door Company LLC for a total cost of $40,580.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 13 is consideration of a resolution for a certified survey map for the properties at 10650 South Parkview, Oakview Parkway and 280 West Parkview, Oakview Parkway and 200 West Oakview Parkway. Doug?
Thank you. This C S M would divide and reconfigure the properties, the mayor just mentioned the addresses into three conforming manufacturing industrial development lots. Lots one and two would be created from the larger parcel, which is lot three of that C S M. And the boundary line for lot three would be slightly moved to the west by about 40 feet, thus increasing the size of that existing lot by just under an acre. The planning, I'm sorry, the planning commission has reviewed the proposed C S M at the meeting of March 26th, and they have recommended their approval.
Great, thank you, Doug. Questions concerning the properties down at Oakview? Seeing none. Motion.
They'll move to approve resolution 12051-040119 approving a certified survey map for Erica Nicole Harris Whispark LLC for the properties at 10650 South Oakview Parkway, 280 West Oakview Parkway and 200 West Oakview Parkway.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 14 is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for Brad Schmidt. Brad Schmidt Properties LLC for the property at 9620 South Shepherd. Doug, you got that one?
Thank you. And forgive me, the graphics have kind of locked up here, so we'll just have to do this one the old-fashioned way. Approval is being requested for the C S M subdivision of the property at 9620 South Shepherd Avenue into two conforming single-family lots. Lot would be bought a little more than a third of an acre after the division. Lot one also has a dwelling on it that dwelling would remain. Just as a side note, the staff has noted that lot one does experience drainage issues currently, and they're recommending that a private system be installed to address this issue. There's also on this a remnant 30-foot wide reservation along South Winter Green Drive prior to a previous C S M. That reservation is not the same as the dedication necessary, nor does it appear on the official map. So as a cleanup, we would remove that reservation. Essentially, and if you look at your exhibits, this takes a lot that was along Shepherd Avenue. And with the approval of the Genipary Estate Subdivision, it allowed for some additional street frontage on the east end of the parcel. Purchaser of this property or the owner of this property is taking advantage of that by creating two lots, two single-family lots, one of the existing parcel, and a new lot for sale and development along Winter Green Drive on the east end of the parcel. So the planning commission has reviewed the proposed C S M. Again, the lots do conform, and they have made the recommendation that the council approve the C S M.
Thank you, Doug. Questions concerning the C S M?
Alderman Dukenyak, third district, no questions, just comment. I have had no calls or concerns from residents in that particular area or from the district in regard to the lot division or the approval of the C S M.
Anybody else? At planning, again, we did take a look at it. Again, it's just a person taking advantage of a deep lot, turning it into two. A lot of pluses here on Winter Green. You're going to have a house that fits a new subdivision. And you're going to rehab the other house with drainage issues. So the drainage issues were addressed at planning, and they are going to work with engineering for that. So other than that, nothing else? Motion.
Dukenyak move to adopt resolution number 12050-040119. This approves a certified survey map for Brad Schmidt. Brad Schmidt Properties LLC for the property at 9620 South Shepherd Avenue.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 15 is our license committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski and make you a
This approves a certified survey map for Brad Schmidt, Brad Schmidt Properties LLC for the property at 9620 South Shepherd Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye. Item 15 is our License Committee, I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kerkowski and make you aware that we do have a request for a speaker on number 15 on items five, eight, and nine. Five through nine, you said, Mayor?
Uh, five, eight, and nine.
Five, eight, nine.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everybody had an opportunity to review the common council report with regards to the activities of the License Committee. Before Mr. Dagnor comes up and speaks, I just wanna say, it looks like it's gonna be a busy and festive time in the city this summer, based on the, the applicants for all the special event permits we had. So, having said that, I'll invite Mr. Dagnor to come up to the podium.
Startin'.
I'll share, I'll share with Andrew. We'll share it with him tomorrow.
Art Dagnor, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I feel obligated to point out these problems that are going to, that are affecting the health of our citizens. As we well know, we have all kinds of, of drug addiction and vaping and who knows what else, opioids, and this particular item that I have passed out, it's just a front sheet, there's a couple more pages to it, but it talks about simultaneous poly-drug use, the problems that people especially, and there's, there's a quote, a reference in this article also of 12th graders, that simultaneously ingest not only alcohol but nicotine and some of the other drugs, even marijuana, I believe is mentioned in this article. So, do we want to start these people in our community on poly-drug use with these alcohol, I, I don't think we do. Seriously consider a different method of celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Steve?
I've got nothing more to add with regards to any comments or what's on the common council report. Does anybody have any comments they wish to add, or?
Steve, I actually do, and this is a, a question that can probably be answered by Chief Anderson. Chief, do you know at, over the past two, three years that we've conducted the events at Drexel Town Square, in the Courtyard area, have there been arrests for drunk and disorderly?
Unfortunately, I, I don't have the numbers. Have we had incidents up here where we've had contact with people? Yes, I can say we've had incidents with people that aren't drinking as well, so I don't have statistics to back up either argument one way or another at this point.
I guess I'll just make a comment, again, just because we facilitate the event doesn't necessarily mean we are advancing or promoting addiction of any kind, whether alcohol-related, tobacco-related, these are substances that can be obtained legally within the city limits anywhere. So again, it is really a person's discretion to partake or not partake in the event. So again, it is just being provided. That, that argument could be made for any type of food that is not good for you in any way, shape, or form, too. So, again, this is really just for event, events. A couple of them do contain some licensing for the events that do contain alcohol, but again, that is strictly up to the person, so. But we do appreciate all the information, Mr. Dagnor. It is pertinent to get that message out there, and again, you are probably correct. Person doesn't know their limits or doesn't wanna start, abstain from it altogether, so, but that's the person's choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other comments from anybody on the council? Okay, hearing none, thank you. Kerkowski, make a motion to adopt the License Committee recommendations as listed on the April 1st, 2019 License Committee Report.
Ex second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye. And item 16 is our vendor summary report. If you could, please take a review of it. Any questions can be directed to, most likely, the front table. Questions? Seeing none, motion?
Oracle move that the council approve the March 26, 2019 vendor summary report in the total of $260,399.40.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye. And that brings us to adjournment. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank the staff, I T., everybody that was, got us so well-prepared here, our assessor, our treasurer, and everybody else, so, thank you all. Motion, please.
Kerkowski, make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.